Owen, are you here from comms too? Okay, thanks very much.
Who's starting the recording? It's usually Louise. Do you want me to start the recording?
Yes, please.
I have to stop it now, just now.
Oh, thank you, David.
Good afternoon. This is a requisition meeting of Stirling Council. Please note that this meeting is being broadcast live on the council's YouTube and a recording will be available for public viewing following the meeting. First, a brief statement on the protocol to be followed during this remote meeting. Members and service managers should activate their cameras. Your microphone should be switched on when invited to speak and switched off when you have finished speaking. This is important as it helps to ensure the quality of the audio for all present. Please use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak and lower it when you have finished speaking. Officers should introduce themselves by confirming their name and role before speaking for the first time on any item. We'll now move to the role call. Julia?
Thank you, Provost. Councillor Benison?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Benny?
I'm here.
Councillor Beryl?
Present.
Councillor Brisley?
Here.
Councillor Davis?
Yes, here.
Councillor Dodds?
Present.
Councillor Errol?
Present.
Councillor Farmer?
Present.
Councillor Flanagan?
Present.
Councillor Gibson?
Present.
Councillor Houston?
I'm here.
Councillor Hutchison?
Present.
Councillor Keane?
Present.
Councillor Laurie?
Present.
Councillor McPherson?
Yeah.
Councillor Madury?
Present.
Councillor McDonald?
Present.
Councillor McGill?
I'm here.
Councillor Oxpro?
Present.
Councillor Simpson?
Present.
Councillor Thompson?
Present.
Councillor Tolemane?
You're here from here?
Councillor Tweet?
Present.
Thank you very much, Provost. Every member is present today.
Thank you. So, the business for today is a motion proposed by Councillor Benny. Councillor Benny, would you like to speak to your motion? Do you have a second there?
Yes, I do, Provost. I think it's Councillor Errol.
Thank you.
So, Provost, my group has brought this motion forward in sorrow. We've worked with Councillor McPherson for many years and throughout, despite some colourful political debate, we have generally felt that his chairmanship of the committee has been appropriate and technically correct. Events over the past week have, however, changed that assessment. This has been a hard week for individual councillors. As a leader, I have to have a view to the wellbeing of my team and to myself, and I cannot remain idle when that wellbeing is put at risk. Councillor McPherson has used his position as Chair of the Planning Panel, Planning and Regulation Panel, to pursue a political debt against its members by questioning their integrity. Conveners of committees should not misuse their position to make politically motivated attacks on members of their committee. Nobody should be expected to serve under the chairmanship of someone who holds them in contempt. It is therefore our view that Councillor McPherson has shown himself unfit to continue in his role as Chair of this non-political quasi judicial panel. It is for the council to decide whether it retains confidence in Councillor McPherson, who we believe cannot be trusted to carry on in this important position. I leave it to the consciences of each individual member of this council to decide whether they think Councillor McPherson should continue or not. If the motion of confidence fails, the Scottish Conservative members of the Planning Panel will resign from the panel. If the motion of confidence succeeds, we would ask that the administration fill the vacant post of Chair as it is appropriate from a political balance point of view that they should do so. That is all I have to say on the matter, Provost. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Errol, do you wish to speak?
I'll second the motion. Reserve my right to speak. Thanks, Provost.
Thank you. Are there any amendments? No, there being none, I will now open the floor to debate. Councillor McPherson?
Provost, sorry, but I mean, I was all good and obviously proposed a direct negative. So, is that required for a confidence vote? I just want to clarify that.
Yes, I'm sure it is. Julia, we can have a direct negative?
Yes, I'm assuming that there will be a direct negative to this motion, but thank you for confirming Councillor McPherson.
Do you have a second there, Councillor McPherson?
Yes, I'm happy to second Councillor McPherson.
That's fine. Right, I'm now opening this up to debate. Councillor McPherson, you've still got your hand up. You want to speak? Want to propose your direct negative?
Yeah, I hear Councillor Benny's comments there, but what is not prepared to be quite clear, there was any specifics on it. So, I'd be very impressed if it would be more specific about what he's talking about.
Julia?
Could I remind members that the public have access to this meeting and that we must be mindful that if exempt information is to be discussed, then members should consider moving this matter into a private session.
Provost, I would like the full details of this. You know, this is a puzzle to me, how this motion's been brought forward and there was like a full debate over it, and I'm sure that the members do. If that means going to private session, so be it.
Are we going to go into private session? Is that what people want to do?
Chair, if I may, I'm not sure if I want to go into private session because I don't know what the detail is. It's a difficult decision to take because you're saying, you know, if there's going to be... You know, I have no idea what's behind Councillor Benny's assertions. So therefore, in asking the question about it, how do we know whether or not this is something that should be taken in private session? So I'm always reluctant to go into private section when matters of potential public interest are there. And that's something as a council we've often agreed. So I really need some advice about that.
Right. Councillor Benny, are you going to respond to Councillor McPherson's question and asking you to go into detail? Are you going to respond to that? And if so, will you be responding within the parameters of what can be in the public domain?
Provost, it's not my intention to say anything other than what I've just said.
Right, thank you. Councillor Tomasz?
Thank you. If it's okay and if it's in the rules of this council meeting, can I ask the proposer a question, please?
Yes.
Okay. If the action of Councillor McPherson is of such a concern to yourself and to the colleagues, there are other avenues that you could pursue. And have you considered pursuing those before you get to this stage? And the reason I'm asking that question is that you've made a judgment on his action that you can't describe. But there is other bodies that are neutral and would have the confidence of the whole of elected members who could perform that task. So that's my question is, okay, have you considered that? And if you had considered that and decided not to, what were the reasons?
Councillor Benny, do you want to respond to that?
Provost, I did say that I wasn't going to elaborate any further. Councillor Tomasz's question is about process, and yes, other considerations were made about what other recourse's could be made. But I feel at this stage it would be unreasonable of me or anyone else to ask members of the Conservative group to serve on the Planning Panel as long as Councillor McPherson remains the Chair of the Planning Panel. Therefore, the best recourse for us is to ask the council if they retain confidence in Councillor McPherson. And obviously, if they do so, I've already outlined that we would not serve on the committee under the chairmanship of Councillor McPherson.
Thank you.
Provost, that is a point of order, please. It is a genuine point of order. The purpose of this meeting today is whether or not council has confidence in me. It does not allow anybody to resign from the planning panel today. That decision will need to be taken at another meeting. But it's important that we detach these two issues here. This is whether or not please council have confidence in me. If they want to do that, they can't do it today. They can do it away for days.
Right. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Provost. I'm rather minded of a famous quote from Donald Rumsfeld. It's the question we have here is, I don't know what I don't know about the situation. And the question of whether it should be in private begs the question is, you know, I don't know what would be revealed by taking it to private. I have no strong views on whether it should be or not, but I feel very much in the dark here. And I'm slightly concerned that we're being asked to remove a convener on the basis of a claim for which we have no evidence. And I understand the planning panel is quasi judicial, so it's quite a significant step. And they are asking members to take this action without any evidence. To me, goes against the grain of the law. So I'm uncertain as to about what actually we are seeking to prove here. In my simple minds, everyone is innocent until proven guilty, but the charge seems to be guilty until proven otherwise.
Right. Councillor Farmer?
Yes, I mean, you know, I've just recently joined the planning panel, but I've been on the planning panel with Councillor McPherson for many years. And I have to say, he discharges his duty with distinction in terms of how he chairs the panel. He is even-handed. He is always professional. He always allows for proper and informed debate. So, you know, I don't understand why we have this motion to remove him as convener when I have not, at any meetings that I've attended, seen any impropriety from Councillor McPherson whatsoever. So the question is, what is the Conservative group? What are the basis for this motion? And what are the concerns that you're raising?
Councillor McGill?
Yeah, thank you, Provost. Just on that vein, have any of the members of the planning panel raised any concerns, any complaints previous to this about the convener?
I don't know the answer to that. Councillor Benny, do you want to respond or have you decided you're not going to say anymore?
Without elaborating, I can answer, Councillor McGill, I've certainly never made any previous complaints about Councillor McPherson's conduct. As Chair of the committee, this complaint is of the nature which I don't think I can continue to not raise. I can not raise this as a complaint. And I know, and I apologize to council and I apologize to you, Provost, that I'm not elaborating here. I don't think it's appropriate to do so. I don't think it would be right. I also don't think that it would be legally proper for me to do so. I do apologize to members of the council. I have spoken to a number of members of the council, including Councillor Farmer, about what the nature of this issue is. And we're very sorry to council and to people who are presumably watching and perhaps might watch after that we can't go into the detail on this. But I am not going to go into the detail of this in either public or private session of the council.
Thank you. Councillor McPherson?
Thanks, Provost. And given this has been broadcast, I think that inference is in there from councillor... Sorry, I'm trying to remember if I've been just connected here. There's actually an inference in there that Councillor Benny is trying to make towards me.
Cheers. Bye bye, bye.
Sorry, go on. Your microphone's not very distinct, Councillor McPherson.
Sorry, I have an issue too, but Councillor Errol kind of jumped in there. I thought it was maybe just anyway, yeah. I think it's important to say that Councillor Benny is making inferences there of wrongdoing in my part in his last statement there. And the rest is shared here, Provost, that is definitely not the case. The issue that Councillor Benny has not prepared to raise is because he knows too well that the allegations of wrongdoing falls on him and his colleagues and not me. And I won't elaborate further on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak? But there's Councillor Keane.
Provost, Councillor Benny has indicated, there seems to be indication there's more to this story that he doesn't want to say that he's told other councillors about. Councillor McPherson has just said that there's more to this story, but he doesn't want to elaborate either. Can I perhaps suggest once again that we do take this into private session to see if we can tease out more of this? And this obviously is not a forum where we are able to have a discussion. And I think it's the public nature of the forum that's causing that situation. So again, I would suggest if council wanted to reconsider its position on taking this matter private at this time. And I think anyone watching this would recognize that we're getting nowhere here. And I would hope that anyone watching this realizes that there's a hesitance to say anything in a public forum. And I would like to make sure all councillors are able to say what they need to say or want to say and are comfortable doing so. That's for Councillor McPherson's benefit as much as Councillor Benny's benefit. But again, I made the point, should we take this into private session?
Right. I'm going to, there's a lot of hands up. Julia?
If I could maybe assist members by just excluding the provision in relation to their decision on private session. And what it does say is the council may decide by passing a resolution at any meeting to exclude the public when it is considering an item of business. If it is likely because of the business itself or what might be said, that exempt information would be given to members of the public. Now exempt information, there's a range of definitions around that. Some of it might relate to personal details around a member of staff or business relationships or indeed allegations in relation to criminal activity or similar. So I just read that out to emphasize that it doesn't necessarily talk about a definite. It talks about what might be said. I hope that's of assistance.
That's very helpful. On a basis of what we've just heard, are we minded to take this into private session?
No, Provost, because I don't see what the point is of going into private session when Councillor Benny has made it clear that he will not divulge any further information than his statement in public session or in private session. But I don't actually see what the point is.
Is that the case, Councillor Benny? You're not going to divulge any more of this?
I certainly won't be divulging anything else on the detail of this in private session either, Provost. I don't think it's appropriate to do so.
Right. Councillor Tomasz?
So I would like it to have gone into private session, but if Councillor Benny says he won't say okay anymore, okay, I need to respect that. I just have a question. If it did go into private session and Councillor Benny doesn't want to say anything, does that preclude, okay, any other councillor in private session that are saying something?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Julia, is that right?
No, that's a matter for individual members, Provost.
Should we take a vote in whether or not we go into private session?
Provost, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
Does any member wish to declare at this stage that they have something that they would like to say in private section that they would not like to say in public session? Because if all members don't have anything to say, there's no point in taking it into private session. If any member does, that may influence how I would set my vote of voting if it was a vote on moving into private session. I have nothing to say in private that I wouldn't say here. So I don't have a need to take it into private session, but others might.
Right. Can I bring in Councillor McPherson? Do you want to go into private session or not? Do you have things that you'd prefer to say in private?
Provost, there's other people before me, but I'm quite happy to wait my turn and see what the people are going to say. But if you're putting me in the spot, at the end of the day, I have no issue either saying it now or in private. But what does concern me here is the position that Councillor Keane is making out here. He sent me an email forty minutes ago asking me to resign because often I read out what he says here. It says, "You should step aside until such time as the matter raised have been addressed to the satisfaction of the relevant parties." That's an outrageous statement to make, Councillor, sending an email to me before a meeting. And I don't know what the allegations are, quite clear with you doing. So what's happening here?
Right. Councillor McGill?
Yes, I must say I'm feeling very uncomfortable about all this. I thought we lived in a democracy or pretended to live in a democracy. And this feels a wee bit like a kangaroo court, that, you know, there's an allegation being made. Nobody knows what the allegation is in detail. Nobody can discuss it either in public session or private session. And I think if there is an allegation of such severity that you're asking a convener to stand down, then an independent body should really be investigating this, taking all sides. Somebody who doesn't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, and come to an independent decision. This really does not sit well with me.
Right. Councillor Davis?
Yes, I tend to agree with Councillor McGill and Councillor Farmer that I think we're in rather dodgy ground here because we're... Showing my age, it reminds me rather of Solzhenitsyn and the girl I got in a pillow. We have kind of a show trial here with the evidence not being presented. And the debate is really about what is in the public domain, what is maybe a legal issue or what is a council process issue. I can't help feel that this issue has become elevated to quite a sort of a high stakes drama when I suspect it's probably more a matter of process. I feel very uncomfortable with being asked to make a decision on something which could be quite significant, but it may not be. And strictly, no point in going into private session if no more information is going to be revealed. So I think that the issue before us is, does the council have confidence in the convener of the planning committee? No evidence has been presented to say to the contrary. So I think it's a very simple issue.
Thank you. Councillor McPherson, do you wish to speak at this point?
Yeah, thanks, Provost.
Yeah, thanks Provost. Yeah, and I think I'll go back to councillor Benny's opening word to me. And you know something Provost, despite our political differences, we've gone back many, many years where I've been campaigning against the Conservative group. It's the party ideology that I've always opposed, not individual members. And I respect Neil Benny absolutely, I respect every Conservative Party member and every Conservative councillor. I don't agree with the party ideology. There is no, I don't have any extra grain here. I just think if you're looking for my head here and I have done something wrong, I would have resigned before this meeting, but I know I haven't done anything wrong. I can 100% guarantee to council that. The allegations have, no allegations have been made against me, there are no complaints made to me as far as I'm aware via the council or the standards commission. So this is councillor Benny and I know what he's upset about. And if he wants to elaborate further, I'm happy to elaborate further. At the end of the day, there's another authority possibly going to investigate this very shortly. And I think we should leave it at that. And I personally now, given that there's nothing going to be offered in private session, we just like to go to the vote. I think it's standard order 62. I think we should just go to the vote Provost.
Right.
This is your most.
Councillor.
Provost, I'm looking for somebody to second that, I think somebody to second that.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
I'd like a right of reply please to councillor McPherson, just for one minute please, if that's okay, I'd like to reply to something you said about me.
I don't know if that's allowed if I'm asked for the procedural motions against the government, Provost, but legal advice, I think.
Julia, we've got a procedural point of order. Councillor McPherson has proposed that we go straight to the vote.
Well, if there's opposition to that, we would have to conduct a vote on the matter Provost.
Is there a seconder?
Yes Provost, I've seconded that.
Councillor Farmer.
I would like a right of reply, so I'm going to propose that we don't move to the vote and continue the debate. I just want to say something in response to that.
Do you have a seconder?
Seconded Provost.
Right, Julia, we'll have to go to the vote on this.
Okay. So the motion is that we put this matter to a vote. Councillor Benison.
Can I just point out?
I'm conducting a vote, sorry, beg your pardon councillor Benison. The vote is on councillor McPherson's motion, seconded by councillor Farmer, that this matter be put straight to a vote without any further discussion.
Yes please, because it's actually getting embarrassing for the public to hear this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Benison. Councillor Benny.
Never in favour of this one, against.
Councillor Beryl.
Against.
Councillor Brisley.
Against.
Councillor Davis.
For.
Councillor Dodds.
Against.
Councillor Erle.
Against.
Councillor Farmer.
For.
Councillor Flanagan.
Against.
Councillor Gibson.
Against.
Councillor Huston.
For.
Councillor Hutchison.
Against.
Councillor Kane.
Against.
Councillor Laurie. Councillor McPherson.
For.
Councillor Midury.
Against.
Councillor McDonald.
Against.
Councillor McGill.
For.
Councillor Oxborough.
Against.
Councillor Simpson.
Not voting.
Councillor Thompson.
For.
Councillor Tolemars.
Not voting.
Councillor Tweed.
For.
The motion is defeated 12, 9, 2 abstentions, so the debate can carry on.
Right councillor Kane.
Hey Provost, just a quick point, I didn't need to know that. Councillor McPherson referred to an email that I sent him 40 minutes ago. He's absolutely correct that I sent him that email. And he wants to know what the matters I'm referring to, the matters that I referred to in the email that I sent to councillor McPherson were the matters that he put in the email to me and other members on Sunday that I was responding to in the email 40 minutes ago. So it's councillor McPherson's email, it's the matters within his email that I'm referring to and it's therefore up to him to expand on them if he so wishes to do so. The point I would make at this point is, we need a functioning planning panel. And the planning panel needs to function with a chair that can command the confidence of the majority of the panel. Now, if councillor McPherson were to win today, or win means possibly the wrong word, if the motion was defeated today, we may have a situation where we have a chair of the planning panel but a dysfunctional planning panel because of the membership. And I think we all have to just, we'll just be aware of what will happen next. And councillor McPherson to my mind has run the planning panel well. I do not say he's done anything that I could call issue with and we've conducted the planning panel, but there is a softer skill that's required of a convener. And that is to be able to command the confidence and the respect of the people that are serving under him in the committee. And it is not clear to me at this time that councillor McPherson can command the respect and the confidence of the majority of the planning panel. When I was urging him to step aside, what I asked him to do was step aside until we could sort this matter out. Because we first and foremost, regardless of how we wish to vote, and I deeply regret that we're here today councillor McPherson, I take absolutely no joy in this situation. I notice it's not of my making that we are here. So when you're calling things I'm saying outrageous, I'm simply trying to help a colleague ensure that we can get to the point where we have a functioning planning panel. So it's unfortunate and I wanted just to say that Provost, that my email to councillor McPherson was simply to ask him to stand aside so that the planning panel, which I note meets on Tuesday, can meet. And I have a deep fear that we're in a situation where the planning panel is dysfunctional. That's regrettable and I hope, I hope Provost, I am wrong. But that's the clarification I wish to give you today. And I'm sorry we have to go to the vote for me to get the chance to respond. And I would say to my colleagues on the table, you could have just let me respond, that was simply what I was asking for. There was no political machinations at all, it was simply to respond to a challenge that had been made to me. And it's very unfortunate that I had to go to the vote.
Thank you councillor Thomas.
Just an observation really. So is the vote today that we have confidence in councillor McPherson to do his job as the convener of planning? Or is there a subtext to this vote which is, do we look at what happened, whatever the outcome, and we're predicting a particular outcome and then a particular reaction? So what we can be voting on what's in front of us and not voting on what an outcome can be? And is that a point of order there? Or can we be voting on something which hasn't been decided yet? So that's my question, is it a question or an observation you can, I don't know.
We're voting, simply we're voting on the motion, the council has no confidence in councillor Alastair McPherson as Chair of the Planning and Regulation Panel. Council resolves to remove councillor McPherson and appoint a new Chair of the Planning and Regulation Panel. That is the motion on which we are.
Okay, thank you Provost. Okay, so it's nothing to do with what will happen at the end of this then?
That's not what we're voting, we're not voting on what will happen at the end of this, we're voting on the motion as I read it out. Councillor McPherson.
Yeah, thanks Provost. I think it's important to see here as well, the threats of making the planning panel in court. You know, I'm sure that the businesses will be quite concerned to hear that. However, and I mean I'm going to clarify that in relation to the makeup of the planning panel, my understanding is that five members of the administration, as long as there are five members of the administration present, you know, that's the quorum for the planning panel. And those five members could be five SNP members, not perfect. But given there's only maybe three or four meetings before the local elections, you know, it's important here that, you know, that multi-million pound planning applications which are going to deliver social rented housing, do they really want to keep these in hold because of an allegation that they're not prepared to say? Do they really want to withdraw taxi driver licences from being determined? You know, at the end of the day, and look at the impact this would have on the supply chain, the local jobs, if these planning applications, multi-million pound planning applications for wind farms have come up, to learn hospital coming up, is that what they really want? And there is an independent process, if anybody's any concerned over me, there should be an independent process rather than trying to paralyze a vital function of this council. I don't think that will do any well with the public, to be honest with you. And we shouldn't allow the threats in any way to make the panel members or councillor member mind up today. This is utter nonsense. In relation to councillor Kane Provost, I don't have the right to respond to him. When I sent councillor Kane an email on Sunday and he said that wasn't his response to, not the way to respond to somebody's, you know, you use the same thread to respond to somebody, this was a brand new thread asking me to resign. And he never answered the question. And I would have had to, Provost, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davis.
Thank you Provost. Yeah, I'm unclear as to what councillor Kane is proposing. As I understand it, he's asking for some kind of investigation. I'm not sure into who and for what and what powers it will have and how it will be conducted. Is he talking about a council investigation or other authority? And what powers will it have? And when it comes to conclusion, what powers will it have to take action?
Provost, point of order, we're drifting here away from the actuality of the motion before us.
Yeah.
And we're getting into hypotheticals here, which is way beyond the remit of this meeting.
Yeah, you're right. We're going to stick to the motion. Councillor Benison.
Thanks Provost. I do think that, I do know what, sorry, I do understand why councillor Benny has brought this forward, but I also understand why councillor Benny, councillor McPherson, sorry, also did what he did. So I do understand both sides. But what I wanted to make clear was that about the planning panel itself, if the Conservatives were to resign from planning panel as they said they would, would the planning panel still be able to operate as?
Unknown participant is now joining.
Julia, can you confirm the statement about the unknown participant?
I can't see anybody unknown, did somebody leave and then rejoin? That's maybe what's happened.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think Jade's just re.
Councillor Hutchison, did you fall out and come back in again?
I have, I've gone on to the audio on my phone and the pictures on my screen, so I hope you can hear me.
No, that's fine, it's just we got a message saying an unknown participant, but I think that was you, so we're okay. Thanks very much.
Right, thank you. I don't see anyone hands up, so I think I'm going to move to.
Provost, I'm just concerned I've lost councillor Benison's direction there. I mean, just a moment, Martin, is he here please?
I'm still here, but I didn't get my question answered.
Oh, sorry, what was your question?
I asked if the planning panel would still be able to operate if the Conservative group were to resign as they have said they would.
I feel that we're, again, I feel we're moving beyond the actual terms of the motion. Julia, did you want to say something?
I was going to confirm that the panel is made up of nine members, five administration and four opposition. And if there were five members, it would still remain courted, but it would be incumbent on the council to try to recover the position of nine members of a planning panel as soon as was reasonably practicable.
Right, thank you very much for that clarification.
Provost, just to clarify, I just had the wrong mind here that we'd be courted and that's the important issue here that Julia clarified, that's really quite an important issue for me. Thank you.
Right councillor McPherson, I was going to ask you to sum up for your motion.
Provost, I think I've said everything that I wanted to say here without, you know, the allegations against the Conservative group, and they're pretty serious allegations, I'm not going to say anything further than that. But at the end of the day, because I don't think it's in anybody's interest at this stage because there's an independent body much higher than this council investigating this. So I'm going to leave it at that. At the end of the day, this is regretful. And this is nothing better than seeking the scalp with somebody that I've worked hard anybody that was a convener of planning over the years. There's a lot of work in it, I've worked diligently, I've paid everybody fairly, you know, and allowed everybody the right to reply. And it's probably been a wee bit lax in meetings, I'm probably on, I recall looking at emails from councillor Dodds after party here thanking me for the way I handled it and allowing him the right to speak and hindered and such like. So I think of the chairman due to the good charity fund. And at the end of the day, allegations have been made against the Conservative group, but not against me. So that's important to see that. And councillor Benny is not prepared to divulge it. I'm not prepared to divulge it at this stage. And I don't think, I should to be honest with you. But if anybody's concerned over my chairmanship, they should go to either Julia or to the standards commission, the process is there. You know, and this is, and councillor Benny has gone about the way his colleagues have been impacted by this for the last week. I've been absolutely, you can imagine, this is treating me a whole lot distressed, but it's actually treating me a whole lot of uncertainty, thinking, what is this about? Absolutely, what is this about? And I'm absolutely intrigued by the Labour Party's decision on this, partners of mine supposedly, and a joint administration, joint partnership agreement. You know, and if councillor Kane quite clearly has come to his decision by asking me to resign, I just, I'm perplexed by the whole thing. And I just look forward to the vote either way. But you know, the important thing here for me Provost, if the Conservative Party and Labour group decide to withdraw, this panel can still function, we owe it to the public. You know, the multi-million pound developments which deliver affordable housing, taxi drivers, licence applications, the supply chain is really, really important here. But if I thought I was in any way jeopardising it, I would resign. I would, I would allow this, the planning panel would be paralyzed, absolutely not. So you know, I'm just saying at the end of the day, we have not had a shred of evidence from the Conservative group on this and I hope I still have the support and the confidence to make things up. Thank you Provost.
Thank you councillor Benny, would you like to sum up for your motion?
Yeah, thank you Provost. Just briefly, just to be absolutely clear, the motion in front of us is the motion in front of us. This is about whether the council retains confidence in councillor McPherson as the Chair of the planning panel. We make no allegation. I have related why we feel we cannot serve under the chairmanship of the planning panel of councillor McPherson on the planning panel. The wellbeing of the team of the Conservative members and indeed all the Conservative group who have been through the mill on various things that have happened around this, I have to put that first. And the logical course of action for me is to test here whether the council retains its confidence in councillor McPherson. And as I say, if they do, I cannot expect and ask, and I don't think it would be reasonable for the council to expect and ask members of the Conservative group to serve under the chairmanship of councillor McPherson. That is all I have to say Provost, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the vote. Julia.
Thank you Provost. So we're now voting on councillor Neil Benny's motion, seconded by councillor Martin Erle. Councillor Benison.
Against. Sorry, against.
Councillor Benny.
For.
Councillor Beryl.
For.
Councillor Brisley.
Abstaining.
Councillor Davis.
Against.
Councillor Dodds.
For.
Councillor Erle.
For.
Councillor Farmer.
Against.
Councillor Flanagan.
For.
Councillor Gibson.
Abstaining.
Councillor Huston.
Against.
Councillor Hutchison.
For.
Councillor Kane.
Abstaining.
Councillor Laurie.
Against.
Councillor McPherson.
Against.
Councillor Midury.
For.
Councillor McDonald.
For.
Councillor McGill.
Against.
Councillor Oxborough.
For.
Councillor Simpson.
Abstaining.
Councillor Thompson.
Against.
Councillor Tolemarsch.
Against.
Councillor Tweet.
Against.
The councillor Benny's motion is defeated, ten, nine with four abstentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our business. Goodbye.
Thank you Provost.
Thank you Provost.